This conference will now be recorded. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the July 9th of 2020 Muscatine City Council Meeting. This is our in-depth session, and so we do dispense with quite a few different things that we do from our regular meetings. We have Krista Bailey sitting in for Cindy, who is on vacation. Hope she's having a wonderful time. Krista, will you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Brackett.
Present.
Councilmember Brockert.
Present.
Councilmember Frelick.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Present.
Councilmember Hopkins.
Present.
Councilmember Gendrich.
Present.
And Councilmember Malcolm.
Present.
Seven present, zero absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much, Krista. Well, we are just going to, since this is an in-depth meeting, we're going to move right along. Our very first thing after roll call on the agenda, we have a resolution to approve the contract for our new city administrator. The city attorney drafted a contract between the city of Muscatine and Carol Webb, as directed by the council on July 2nd. The resolution is attached for everyone to see, and I would entertain a motion to approve and adopt the resolution as submitted.
So moved, Your Honor.
So moved, Captain.
We have a motion by Councilman Brackett with a second by Councilman Hopkins. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say that we are all very excited to have Carol join us and be the new city administrator for the city of Muscatine. I, we hope that she loves it here. We're very excited to have her start and, and see and enjoy all the new things and the new ideas that she's going to bring to our community, and we're quite certain that she's going to do a wonderful job and fit in very, very well here. Hearing no other discussion, Councilwoman Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
Aye.
Councilman Frelick.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilman Brackett.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with all ayes, and we're starting an exciting new venture. Next on our agenda is a request to approve the submission of a request for applications to the EPA for the supporting anaerobic digestion in communities. And along with this grant, the council will be also authorizing a letter of support to be submitted with it. Do I have a request to fulfill this as submitted? So moved, Gordon.
So moved, Your Honor.
Do I have a second?
Brockert.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Gordon with a second by Councilwoman Brockert. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The request is approved with all ayes. Next, we have on the agenda a discussion regarding the proclamation for mandatory face coverings in the city of Muscatine, and I think that's you, Dennis.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you. I've just got a short statement I'd like to read. In my opinion, the process for the mayor's proclamation on July 5th, 2020 was troublesome because the entire council was not given sufficient time to evaluate the proclamation prior to its being leaked to the public, which left the council in an undesirable and difficult position within the community. The public deserves from here to hear from the council members, one by one, for their, on their opinion. I would like to remind everybody that several weeks ago, the council voted to open the city's public buildings back up to the citizens. Face masks, social distancing, and sanitation were all part of the reopening process. I personally wear a face mask in public where I can't social distance. Currently, reports say that social distancing is as important as face masks in helping to stop the spread of COVID-19. I believe that businesses, that business people in Muscatine are able to adapt to this situation based on their own business needs and make the adjustments necessary. Businesses should follow state guidelines to protect their patrons. As for the public, common sense to protect yourself and those you come into contact with. Wear a face mask if you can't social distance or do both when possible. There always be some people who will not follow common sense rules. They must then take the responsibility for their actions. The effect of this proclamation created a public outcry and placed law enforcement in a position of either enforcing a dubious proclamation or ignoring an emergency order, and even resulted in threats against the life of the mayor. It is my understanding that our governor, state attorney general, and county attorney do not agree with this proclamation at this time. I don't support this proclamation as written. As time goes by, and the state of Iowa adjusts to COVID-19, we, the city of Muscatine, may need to make adjustments following state guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Did anyone else want to weigh in?
I've got a comment. I'll go next, I guess. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I've got to read it, too. I believe the mayor's proclamation was made with, with a belief that this was the best way to help curtail the increase of COVID virus in our city. Mayor Brodessen has been dedicated to working with the local emergency and public health teams and communicating our stats in a timely and consistent manner. She was implementing a change to improve the safety of our city, but who knew it would be so explosive? But with that said, I believe that the normal steps were bypassed when making the decision, especially the involvement with the city council. The premature release of the proclamation on social media, even before it was ready for publication, meant that steps were missed and the opportunity to properly communicate the plan was derailed. At this time, I would support rescinding the proclamation as written, not because I don't believe that masks and social distancing are effective, but because I believe that it's not enforceable in its current state. Please continue to use masks and follow the social distancing guidelines, if not for yourself, but for those around you. Respect the opinions of others, which is something we've lost sight of over this last week. We are allowed to voice differing opinions, but do so with respect and tolerance. And one last comment. We need to be flexible. Things are changing at a rapid rate, and we need to be able to adjust to help beat this COVID-19. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gordon. I'm not prepared to rescind the proclamation at this time. I have a couple of different things that I, that I am weighing and discussing with some area professionals. We're in the middle of a global pandemic, as you know, and so I look to the health experts for the guidance when it comes to the health and safety of all of us, and I'm certainly not one of those myself. So, so I lean on them very heavily, and as all of you know, since this started, I am involved in several times a week, sometimes daily, meetings regarding the virus, and keep very close information coming into me as we work through it, and I work very closely with the Emergency Management Commission, as, as you have said, and our, the operations and public health, and trying to make sure that we're addressing things as they come up. And I know, I know it's a little bit, a little bit different for a council that isn't involved in the day-to-day dealing with this pandemic, as, as I have been, and I've tried, as you know, I've tried to do periodic updates, but that only goes so far as, as opposed to being in those actual meetings. Some of the, the groups that we've been in are with a variety of people trying to deal with the pandemic. So not only the public health, but with the mayors of other, of the other cities in our county, and firefighters, and the sheriff's office, and we have been scaling that back a little bit as things have went on. But as I shared, as I've shared with some of you, with, with all of you, council, this certainly didn't come up just willy-nilly from me. This was done in collaboration with our healthcare experts, and, and you're right, both, both Dennis and Peggy comment, or I'm sorry, Council, Councilman Frelick and Councilwoman Gordon, I apologize. Both of you did allude to the fact that the, the whole process for this was unfortunate, the way it was leaked to social media. That really made it very difficult for the community. It made it difficult for council. It made it difficult for me, and really did put everybody in a situation of being at risk as a result. So this just was like this just popped out of nowhere, and nobody had an opportunity to weigh in and make changes and, and, you know, collaborate together. So, so that was really unfortunate, and the way that that happened. I have been, as you know, I was in communication for most of the week with our city attorney, making sure that everything was acceptable, and he still says we are where we need to be. And although there might be some enforcement issues going on, he, his, his advice is to leave it lay, and we'll see how things progress. We're on new territory here, you know. I know there's some differing opinions with the, the attorney general saying he doesn't think that, that cities and counties have the, have the opportunity to do emergency proclamations that aren't necessarily in line with the governor. However, this is just adding to hers. It certainly isn't doing anything to retract from hers. But, but as I said, this is new territory, you know. We haven't, none of us have experienced this in our lifetimes, and so the, the rules of the road are very awkward. And our city attorney and the other attorneys that he enlisted in his help to make this, these decisions is very sure that, that he's where we need to be, and the attorney general did not explain why he thinks the, that this isn't in line with what should be done. So while we have an enforcement issue, that's the, that's the only issue that we do have, and, and I'm not in any place or certainly ready to change it. But I do know that even though we might have an enforcement issue going on right now, we have an enforcement issue with a lot of things. We have an enforcement issue with our fireworks. We have an enforcement issue with other things in our community that we all get calls about every day. So we do know that more people are wearing face coverings and paying attention to social distancing since this came out. A plethora of healthcare and administrative services and businesses and organizations have reached out to me and believing and thanking us for having this be in place to help assist them. Businesses should not have to be put in the position to please half of their customers. This half wants them, this half doesn't. That automatically means that they're going to lose part of their customers as a result. If that decision is made by someone else, that gives them the opportunity to be able to voluntarily serve all of their customers, and their customers not hold that against them. So I'm, I'm not willing to rescind it at this time, and I, but I really appreciate your comments. And hopefully, you know, as, as the dust settles here a little bit, you know, with the leak, everybody's still kind of fired up and trying to get things settled down a little bit. But hopefully, as things move forward in the next couple of days, we can work on, you know, maybe putting together a group where we can sit down and talk about how this is going to work and what, what can we do? Because I believe that every one of us has the right intentions to protect the safe, and safety and health of everybody in the city of Muscatine, as well as our economic success. So while we, as long as we all have that truly in our heart, we can work through anything. So I believe that, you know, as the next day or two transgresses and, or transposes, and we keep moving forward, we'll be able to come to just molding and trying to make things better so that it works for everybody in our community because that, that's what we need and want. Is there anyone else that wanted to weigh in?
I, I was just going to say that, you know, I, while it did blow up on social media because somebody decided, instead of providing feedback to the mayor, they decided to share it with the public instead before any feedback was given, we did still have a, you know, at least a few days in there. While granted, our phones were, some of us, our phones were ringing a bit off the hook. You know, there was some time for feedback, not a lot, which, you know, I, I understand that issue. But there was some time for feedback there before it was actually published, as the mayor published it on Sunday. But, you know, we, you know, the main thing really is, you know, we need, we need to look at the situation and just take these small acts and, and, and work on them. I mean, it's, you go to the store, and the number of people that work, you know, the people, you take the people that work there, that in a lot of cases, you know, their, their companies require them to wear masks. I know, you know, my, the company I work for has a lot of regulations in place at this time. But if it's a retail establishment, those employees are, are there working and probably wearing a mask. But, you know, the misconception I think a lot of people have is that the mask you wear protects you, and that is not the case in, you know, for the most part. The mask is to protect people from you when you don't know that you're infected. And that, I think, is the biggest misconception that people have about masks, is, is who it's protecting. So I wear a mask not to protect myself. I wear a mask to protect others. There was recently an exchange on social media pointing out that I was at an event a while back where I did not practice complete safe mask guidelines. I fully admit that, and I've been doing my best to maintain proper mask wear. You know, no, but none, nobody's perfect. None of us are. And so we may have times where we slip up. We may have times where we don't quite practice social distancing properly. The goal is not to 100% prevent this illness, because we, you know, we as a, as a people, as an entire world, don't know enough about this virus yet to fully understand that. But the goal is to slow the spread, because if we can, you know, continue to slow the spread of the virus, then that allows more time for treatment, more time for possible vaccine to be developed, and things along those lines. So slowing it down, because as we saw earlier in the year, when it starts to spread too quickly, then we have higher levels of government shut us down without, without any option. So while I don't like things like a mandate, you know, that, that requires people to change their daily behavior, I would much less, I would, I would be much less happy about having our businesses shut down. So while there wasn't, you know, this wasn't necessarily the perfect solution, it was a, a solution that I feel was made in good faith and made in a way that was an attempt to protect both our business community, as well as the health of our residents. And so, you know, I think maybe, you know, as the mayor may be looking at having a, you know, a further conversation on it, and I think that's a good thing. But, you know, I, I think, you know, it, it was made in, it was made in good faith, in my opinion, from my perspective, and I do think that if people wanted to weigh in, there was at least a couple of things to do it. So that's, that's my stance on it. Thank you.
Mayor, can you hear me?
Was there anyone else?
Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, John, go ahead.
I, I think people know.
Yes, John, go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay, you guys?
Yes, you're doing that cutting out thing, though.
I'll, I'll go ahead and get started here. I have some, as, as you know, I was, I'm a, was, I am and opposed to the mandatory face mask proclamation. And I want our citizens to be safe and be aware of all the precautions they should be using to make their best effort to stay healthy. Face masks, social distancing, washing your hands, exercise, et cetera, are all beneficial. Strategies. Many businesses require face masks. Many do not. Some people pull their face mask down when they talk to you, and, you know, some do not have one on. Our governor has said the proclamation is inappropriate. Our county attorney disagrees with the proclamation. Many citizens believe in choice. With all the questions surrounding the face mask proclamation and the current state of our budget, problems, budget problems forthcoming, and budget considerations, considering the difficult nature of enforcement, the face mask proclamation, enforcing the face mask proclamation, the costs and the potential cost of this proclamation, I, I would like to make the following motion the city council to consider. If I could make that motion, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead. I think.
Okay, if you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to ask the city.
We can hear you.
Okay, I'd like to ask the city council to approve a motion directing the interim city administrator and incoming city administrator to not allow or approve any funds or staff time to be spent or utilized following or enforcing the face mask proclamation as issued by the mayor of Muscatine, for the city of Muscatine, on July 5th, or any future date unless the proclamation is consistent with the recommendation of the governor of Iowa. That is my motion. For consideration, please.
And that is a valid. That is a, we have a motion by Councilman Gendrich with a second by Councilman Hopkins. I would just like to share that that is a valid, a valid motion as approved by our city attorney. So just to be clear, the, the proclamation stands, the enforcement of the proclamation that utilizes city funds and staff time, which means city funds, is what the, is what the motion is regarding. Is there any discussion about that? Hearing none. Councilwoman Gordon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Malcolm.
May.
Councilman Frelick.
Aye.
Councilman Hopkins.
Aye.
Councilman, Councilwoman Brockert.
Aye.
Councilman Gendrich.
Aye.
Councilman Brackett.
May.
The motion carries, or the, yes, the motion carries with a vote of five to two. So staff time and expenses will not be utilized to carry out the proclamation until such time that the governor agrees. And now we are on number six. Pardon me?
I just, I had a comment, if it's all right. I know it's after the fact, but I just want to clarify for, for those that voted for this, what that means. That means that we can have zero meetings, zero discussion, or anything else regarding this proclamation because it would tie up staff time. So you've effectively shut down all communications on this unless we initiate something new?
That's correct.
So we can do absolutely nothing on it now at this point in time in regards to that proclamation. We can't adjust it or make changes or anything along those lines from the way that that was done?
That's correct.
But we can introduce a new motion to change at another time.
Not, not until it's consistent with the governor's proclamation or the governor deems it official.
Okay. All right, we are on number five. Andrew, are, are you taking the discussion on backyard chickens?
Mayor, council, yeah, I'm here. I can just kind of give a, just kind of a, a really brief overview of where we're at with that, and then kind of open it up to your discussion. So on May 7th, the city council directed the Planning and Zoning Commission review the current rules on the keeping of chickens in residential zoning districts. So as per the direction of the council, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed this at, at two meetings on both May 26th and on June 9th. Staff prepared extensive background material on, on this issue, which was attached to the memo that you all received in advance at tonight's meeting. And so then on, after June 9th meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission, with a four to two vote, voted to recommend that the current regulations remain unchanged. So kind of with that, I'll open that up to any, you know, kind of further questions you might have on that, or any direction that you would have to staff and how to proceed on this issue, if at all.
Well, I, it was, if I remember correctly, I don't think council wanted to let the people have chickens either, did you? Nope. Or did any of you?
I do, but I don't think that going against the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time would be prudent because it would require a super majority, and based on previous discussions, I don't think that that would happen at this time. I, you know, my intent will be to further discussion with the, the group that is interested in bringing this forward, have them put together, you know, maybe a new approach, and address planning and zoning again in the future. I don't know if there's anybody from that group on the, on the call that tonight that would potentially want to weigh in, but that's, that's my stance on it, because I, I don't think there was a lot of progress made, and, and I think there were also some insults made during that, at least one of those planning and zoning meetings in regards to the public. And so that, I think, needs to be addressed before this goes back.
Anyone else? Any comments? Nothing? Hearing nothing? We'll continue on. Councilwoman Gordon, did you have anything to share tonight?
Just to please help support our local businesses, small businesses. They're doing everything they can to survive during this time and be safe, but thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Malcolm?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Frelick?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brockert?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Councilman Gendrich?
I have nothing. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Gendrich? Councilman Brackett?
Unless there's somebody from Public Works on that would be able to give us a quick update on timeframe of the roundabout on Second and Mulberry, that would be the only question I would, the only thing I would have would just be estimated possible completion date, or not, maybe not completion date, but open date for the road for that, for the roundabout at this point, if there's anyone present that could address that.
Is anyone on here that can speak to the roundabout?
Mayor, council, this is.
I guess not. Sorry, Councilman.
Greg just unmuted.
And then it muted again because I thought somebody else was going to weigh in. There, there had been, Pat Lynch was on for a little while. I don't know if he's still here or not.
I don't, I don't see his name showing up anymore.
So given, I mean, it's, I, I'm loathe to try to lay a date out for.
So given, I mean, it's, we're, I, I'm loath to try to lay a date out for, with the way this has gone, because every time we put a date out, it slips on us some, but we're hoping that within the next week to 10 days, it'll be open.
Okay, yeah, and that, that was, I just had somebody hit me up with that question earlier today, and, and I wasn't, I knew it was somewhere within that range, so 10 days or so is what we're hoping for, barring any further complications. Is that basically accurate?
Well, sooner, I'm hoping, but I would, yeah, that's.
I, I don't say. If it's sooner, then that's awesome, but, um, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
10 days, hopefully, barring any further complications.
Yeah.
The other thing, while I'm thinking about it, too, is at a future meeting, I think we need to address the topic of Lake Park Boulevard again, and see if we can't get moving on something over there. I was getting videos sent to me of the street filling up with water a bit just before the council meeting, so, but that's all I've got. Thank you.
Mayor, I would concur there with Kelsey, too. I know I've been over and talked with the residents, and we need to keep that on the burner.
Mayor, you're muted.
I touched it, but it must not have got it. Greg, did you have anything?
I think I'm going to pass the seat, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Oh, for a while there, Peggy, you were upside down.
Oh. Sorry.
I would just like to say, before we close, as we are starting a new peak in escalation of COVID-19 positive cases, today we saw 26 new cases, and we are unfortunately headed down a long, a bad path, and according to public health, we have to be even more diligent. And this prevention method, whether or not we're going to give tickets for it, we, I don't doubt that we were going to do that anyway, so let's still make sure that everybody practices social distancing and wear a face covering if you go out in public if you can't social distance. I implore you, please, to protect your friends and neighbors. We lost another member to our community, of our community yesterday, a, a young man with his life ahead of him. This is, this is something that weighs heavy on me, every loss that we've had in our community, and please, please be diligent about your safety precautions. Do I have a motion to adjourn? We're adjourned. Good night.